Mr. Raj?
Here.
Commissioner Haynes?
Here.
Commissioner Bowers? Commissioner Haddon?
Here.
Mayor May?
Here. We do have a forum present and, um... First item is citizen comments. Do we have any cities that have any items that would like to come in? Ms. Gibbs, that's what we need.
Yes, there are two things I'd kind of ask for. Item 7.8, which is demolition of that property on Homestead. Would it be possible to wait to demolish that property until after you all, if you all pass the ordinance in 4.1, establishing a nuisance board? Would that give you all a better chance to recoup the demolition costs?
I'm going to defer that to the planning area. Here you go. Okay. Is this part of the next meeting? Thanks, sir.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I think that to the extent that the city incurs money taking care of property, you're more likely to recover it under the nuisance code than you would under the property maintenance code. So, the short answer is that while there are no guarantees, it probably does make sense to delay that until after the nuisance code is put into place if the commission decides to go that way. And, of course, you've got the nuisance code ordinance in your package tonight.
No, we'll have, I guess, whenever Mr. Mueller gets in here, we can, if we need to get started.
It seems like a shit, I mean, to me, it seems like a no-brainer. It is. Can't recoup those costs under a nuisance board. I see no point, the demolition cost, which is what, roughly half the budgeted amount of demolition? I don't, I see absolutely no reason at all to go on with it. I've gotten even the chance of getting something. That's better than nothing.
We've got time.
Now, I would request personally that item 7.8 be pulled, because that's under the consent agenda. I would request it be pulled. Any further action on 4.1? I've only been down here 20 years, Bill.
Well, you learn well. Um, you have anything else?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
My second thing I would like to address concerns the sewer fees that you all charge, which are a minimum of 2,000 gallons a month. I'm in a one-person household. There are six dwellings on my street on Marshall Ford. No, eight dwellings, households on Marshall Ford, and six of those eight are one-person You all are charging me each month for 2,000 gallons of sewage. However, the plant board is showing the amount of water usage that I use, and I've totaled up January through September 16th of this year. The plant board says I have used 5,800 gallons of water. You all have charged me for 18,000 gallons of water in my sewage feed. That's less than a third. And if I really mean, I'd say you all were stealing. But I do think this is unfair. I am subsidizing. So are my neighbors. Subsidizing the city's sewage cost, and I don't like it. Will you all consider adjusting? Somebody at some time has set a 2,000 gallon minimum. And since the plant board is breaking down gallon usage, I don't see why you all can't charge according to the gallon usage rather than 2,000 gallon minimum.
Do you mind telling me, you said 5,800 gallons from January through?
Through the statement I got that was due September 16th. The highest usage according, my highest water usage according to the plant board was 900 gallons in July, when I watered the yard. The lowest usage I've got's 500 gallons. And Freyford is full of one and two people households, and we're all subsidized. Won't you at least consider, discuss? He's already, Mr. Scow's already?
Oh, he's at Ebert's.
At length.
Well, now, we'll, obviously, we'll, if I just give a last staff or some kind of feedback on the new comments.
May I have a deadline on it?
We'll take two, get something like that, see if we can manage it. By the end of the week, we can have some information.
Not have a response, no action, but respond.
Yes. Okay.
Mayor, I would just like to echo Ms. Gibbs. We talked about this way back when I was on the commission, and I think that minimum needs to be lowered at least by half, if not down to 500, because what is, the people that are using the least are actually doing a lot of the subsidy, and it's really not fair. It's regressive. And so, I didn't hear the first part of what you said, but I never did like the 2,000 minimum. I never liked it to begin with. We had conversations several years back about that, and I would like that minimum to come way down. I don't know what else you might present or what else you might come back with, but I've never liked the 2,000, and I still don't like it, and most of the time, I don't use my 2,000 either, and I use a lot of water, and I'm sure there's a lot of single people in this town that are, and we're subsidizing, and you're exactly right. I'm sorry, Tommy. So, that's just my two cents.
Why not wait until November work session, and then whatever Mr. Scow comes up with can be presented to everybody?
We'll do that.
And that will, you know, that will, because there's going to be other things more important than this coming up, but it's something I really do think you all need to address, because it is as much a matter of discrimination as the fairness ordinance that you all asked to abolish that sort of discrimination.
Anything else?
That's all.
You know, you can always, even at that, if you ask people, if you have other questions, you can call anyone of us or email us.
Yes.
Well, thank you so much. We'll have a good beginning of information.
If you want it on the November work session there, you can.
It's up to the commission. I mean, I'm perfectly fine with getting the report placed in my box or emailed to me if the commission wants to.
Well, if you all want it early, it better mean you can't get it early and discuss it at work session.
We'll get it to you by the weekend.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, get back to the agenda. Anyone, commissioners have items on the October 20th agenda they would like to address? And I guess the one thing is, I guess we'll wait to get a report from our staff folks about whether or not the demolition of the property can be delayed until which time, until after which time a nuisance board is created if the commission is in plan to do that, which I think there is since it's on the agenda. I haven't talked individual members of the commission to find out one way or another, but I believe just based on past conversation that there probably is. So, I mean, I guess with barring any type of public safety issue with that structure, shouldn't be any real issues. Okay, if not, then ask the city manager, the staff reports.
Do you have any comments?
A couple of things, just real quick, just for your knowledge. We were notified Friday that the Audiapavilion at the top of Coe Spring, the private public partnership that Audiagroup is on, one best facility in the state, will be awarded in a war at the November meeting in Covington. And also, the Mid-Eagle Festival, days and nights, one best program. There are over 5,000 people here, so we were excited about that. Just learned about it Friday afternoon.
Congratulations. Mr. Scow?
If the commission will allow, I've got a balancing change order on our Merle Avenues project. It'll be about $20,000. It's a $900,000 contract. I'd like to add that final balancing change order to the consent.
There's no objection?
No objection.
Well, I think, Mr. Schlem, Mr. Gosson, I'm sorry, excuse me, Ms. Fields. Well, Mr. Gosson, let's move around the room. Mr. Bradley?
I have a couple of things. As part of our St. Clair sidewalk project, one of the things that we wanted to do out on West Main and St. Clair, there was some discussion about the crosswalks were at an odd shape. So, we have been building the ramps to straighten those up, but what we wanted to do was to mill out the asphalt in that area and replace with new asphalt and then do a stamped asphalt that is coated to make it look like red brick. It's not actual brick, but it's asphalt, but it looks like red brick. And so, we've been talking to the pavement company about the idea of doing that, just to kind of tie in one project with the St. Clair Mall. And we believe that'll be a better solution than trying to actually put brick down. So, I just wanted to bring that up and see if there were any concerns from the commission on that.
Sounds like a good idea.
DFI on board?
I'd like to talk to them about it. I wanted to talk to you about it first.
Okay.
Okay. The other issue I have is some direction on the streetlights. We've been getting questions from the county as far as they want to order streetlights for St. Clair to go forward, and we're just waiting for some direction.
Have we got any pictures or anything of what they want to get, or?
Well, their original plan was to go with the three globe.
Right.
That matches the five globe on the rest of St. Clair. Then we had some discussion, I think it was the last meeting, about doing a different style light in town. And so, Derek found an older gas light type that we presented to the city manager as a possible alternative.
I have that. I've not disseminated it to the commission.
We haven't seen it, we haven't seen it yet.
Is there any difference in doing gas versus electric?
It's not gas. It looks like a gas.
Oh, okay. Like, a gas pipe in some car's going to hit that, and things will blow up.
We'll have a baseline. It's a single ambusher.
Lights going to be on the same street as the county, so are we trying, are we going to try to match them, or are we having two different lights?
Well, they're waiting for us to tell.
So that they'll get the same thing.
So that they'll get the same thing.
You know, we've talked about lights three or four times, and I think it's pretty well comes down to one or two critical problems. The big overall problem is the lights don't match downtown, and they're a variety of types. The layers went down, did all that. The other problem is, is that we don't have the money to make them all uniform, and we're under a time crunch because we need to go ahead and order them. So, my two cents is we order whatever we think might look the best in that area and complement the ones that we already have, and then put off for another day the uniformity of the lights.
So, making it more uniform through St. Clair, kind of like Capitol Avenue's uniform?
Yes, ma'am.
And then having more, a different residential type light in more residential type areas versus business district?
Yeah, and/or, as we maybe get funds or figure something out, we look to the future to make things more uniform, because I don't even think they're uniform within the business district or within residential areas. So, I mean, we've got a problem, and there's not a solution in the time which we have, and there's not money to solve it, so we just need to pick something that's going to work and go on. Because county, we need to go ahead and get with it, get it done.
The deadline is December.
Yes, they're opening about mid-December. Tom, what's, do we have a deadline in terms of?
They're a big holdup, that I understand, is internal, is inside the building. The window that we're facing is the paving. We need to, we need to get the sidewalks done so we can get the paving done before the plans close. Now, the lights themselves, we have withheld, and we have made arrangements because even if we order the lights today, whichever ones that we order, it's probably going to be six weeks or more before we get them in. So, the current lights will stay, will come back in after the fact and switch out the current lights with whatever we put up. So, we've kind of planned around the fact that we're not going to have these right now, but we need to go ahead and get them ordered as soon as we can. That doesn't, not having the lights doesn't hold up the paving, and it certainly is not holding up the county, other than they want their lights in for when they open.
Does weather play any part in being able to change out the lights, such as weather?
Temperature? No, only in the fact that if it was really cold, we probably couldn't pour the concrete for the base or anything. We might have to wait on that. But as far as just actual installation, no.
Puts us six weeks, puts us, what?
Puts us, yeah. We want to get paved before then. So, we've stubbed out and we've made arrangements to work around that.
I don't know, Hannah, but we don't do, because of the city, whether the name changed.
However.
I would like to ask you a question. Do you have a?
Yes, I do. The Streetsgate Committee fought this light issue, and fought is the word I'm intentionally I don't know, I don't know where we are left vis-à-vis Streetsgate work or the plan that was approved. The plan that was approved called for a specific type of light down there. I'm not in favor of putting in whatever you can get and then coming around and replacing it with something a few years down the road. That's been a mine price for the same thing. It does not offend me if there's three globe lights next to a five globe lights, so long as I can see where I'm going. But the Streetsgate Committee did approve plan. I don't know how closely the city is going to be held to the adherence of that plan. I don't know what kind of money the county is going to use. Are they going to use their own money, or if they got some kind of federal or whatever? But if they're using their money, I think it would be nice if they could match what's down there. And may or do they not want to?
No, they're playing.
They're just waiting on us.
What if we got to deliver it then? If they're paying for?
We're putting lots on our side of the street, too.
Oh. This is one reason I voted for merger. A city on one side and county on the other leaves the, this is a complete waste of time. But I don't know if what you all want to do is going to form a Streetsgate. I don't know if DFI can be able to answer that, because there's been a change in directors down there. I don't know that anybody knows, for whatever that's worth. And I don't care, you can put a candlestick there, as far as I'm concerned. But it's something, somebody I'll look into somewhere along the line. I'd hate to be in violation and have to pay back the money that's already been stamped down there. And if we're in violation, we may very well have to. I don't know. But there's all kinds of legal questions here that need to be looked at.
Is there here we work, or we're outside of that?
We're outside of that area now, yeah.
Not on St. Clair, you're not.
From West Main to the bridge.
They're not removing any ones that aren't there.
Where are, you're talking about putting new ones in on St. Clair?
From Main.
The 200 block of St. Clair.
Main Street back to the bridge.
That is Streetsgate. Streetsgate goes from the bridge north.
Well, in a phase, they hit the different phases. The original lights were in phase one, and then we did.
But still, no, the total plan was approved regardless of what phase. I just don't want the city to get in trouble, be in violation.
The two lights that are there on St. Clair now are Cobra Head, like the old Cobra Head. They weren't paid, there weren't lights installed, is my understanding. They weren't installed as part of that funding. And so, what the county wanted to do was they wanted to come back with the five globes, but they were worried about the width of the two that hang out because the sidewalks are narrower, so then they wanted to go with the three globe.
And there also is some problem, if I'm not mistaken, with the height of the five globe facility, these be delivery trucks.
I'm sorry, I just realized, I'm trying to go too much back and forth. I apologize. Um, here's the situation. We have part of Main Street that had the lights installed from Ann Street to St. Clair, and then on St. Clair, from Main Street to Broadway. There is no more funding for the rest of Main Street or the rest of St. Clair. That funding is not there because of the money, just they abolished the program. It just ran out. So, the problem we're faced with, unfortunately, is however many lamps we had downtown, I forgot how many I counted, nine, 10, 11, depending on whatever, wherever you're looking. And I think what we talked about was on Wapping, from Wapping Street to Main Street on St. Clair, if we're going to put lights in that are not going to match because they can't, can't use the five globe because of the sidewalk. The sidewalk on St. Clair down where the mall is, is, the sidewalk's not wider, but because the street is one lane and you got the brick part, that makes it where cars are not going to hit those five globes. So, the concern that I had was, do we want to go with another style of lamp downtown, which I really personally don't favor, but go back with something that would be, something that we could put down, we're going to put down, we have to put lights down the rest of Main Street and the rest of St. Clair? And now their chance to do it in St. Clair is if we can't use, the five globe lamps aren't going to work on St. Clair. So, it seemed to me it made more, in the long term, it made better financial and historical accuracy to go with something that could be used in the rest of the downtown. So, that's where I, that's where this kind of came up with, and understanding, we're not going to, as the question was, we don't have the money to come up with putting all those lamps in at one time. I mean, we could do it, but it just means something else that we don't do, and I don't think the commission wants to sacrifice something else. And just in the short term, we would, we would go with some type of lighting that would work and be, and that would fit in and look better, and still provide the lighting. And that's what we'd go with in the future when we came back and replaced.
And I think where we are, Mayor, is we've just really been waiting on you to tell us which one you want.
Okay. And I think the, I think we looked at, when you said you got the colonial style, the gas lamp, so that fits in with what? There is an original lamp on the corner of the West Lindsey Block, Wapping and Washington.
Washington.
That's an original lamp, so that's not, that's an actual lamp, but I don't, I haven't seen the, I missed the last commission meeting, so I'll follow up for that. So, we haven't seen the lamp, but if even it was just close, it'd feel better than...
I can forward those.
Okay. Because I said I haven't seen it. I know we had that. I was waiting just.
My air.
That's okay. No, no, it's okay. Just kind of.
How many, we got about? Four?
For this project, the county was going to buy three, and we were going to buy four. And I understand, I don't want to hold them to this, but I understand that they're talking about even maybe going around the corner down in front of their building on West Main and adding some lights as well.
That would help. Maybe they'll buy 10.
See if we can get a deal.
That still helps us with our problem of what are we going to put down the rest of Main and.
Let's hold those, and we just need, but we didn't give them some direction.
Yeah, I didn't know we had, I was waiting, I've been waiting to see the, I knew that they're.
You marked that one off on this.
Sure. Yeah.
Mr. Bradley?
I don't have anything else.
Mr. Moore? Please move him. Mr. Mueller? Mr. McCarty? Mr. Vecheco?
You all look great.
Oh, we, we had a question. Had a citizen comment. This was asked about the, I think it was item 7.8, which is the demolition of the property in the Homestead area, and if we would be better to wait until after the commission adopts item 4.1, which is a nuisance board, would we be able to recoup our money easier under the provisions of a nuisance board versus the way it is now? And we, the only reason we were concerned about not saying yes or no is if there's any kind of public safety concern with the structure the way it is now, or can wait until after we get the nuisance board up, which would be, at the earliest, would be November.
If you wanted to wait, the structure itself is not in imminent danger of collapse or danger to citizens. It's been on our list for a while, came up. We provide you all a list of, I think there's like eight top priorities, and we've got bids on, from one company, bids for all of them, and we're waiting to get this for the others. If we waited on all or this one specific one, and the new order was passed, we would have to, my understanding, we send a new citation to the owner based on a new language, go twice to the code enforcement board. We're looking at about five to six months before we would be at the point where we are now. Just to be honest with you, because they have to, we'd have to pull through the order process and do progress, and it would be new. Or all eight of those are under that situation. Now, the second priority of ones, we've sent new citations, we've sent citations to those now, and those who are still there before the code enforcement board, and those we could suspend and wait until the orders, because they're starting to draft, basically.
You know, I don't like to wait, so that's just my nature, but I would suggest that we go ahead and proceed with the red ones, and then the ones you gave us that were in yellow, go ahead and do it under the new nuisance board, but, I mean, that's just one person.
Well, it sounded like, the other question, too, was, did we already have a contract? We didn't, we haven't voted on the demolition contract that's on there for the 28th, but I'm not sure, like, the way that that works, though, if we owe, have any kind of contractual obligations with?
No, it's this point. That's what, this, on the voting meeting, I.
Okay.
Sorry.
28th. 28th.
That's when you would actually execute the agreement in the memorandum. So if we don't do it, I would just tell them, sorry.
So the process would be, we'd have to recite the property owner, owners, whomever, and then go back before the nuisance board. And that would take approximately, you mentioned, five to six months.
Yes, because if I'm not mistaken, the process is two citations, two board orders, and then you go forward. That's how it would have been done. And the difference between the code board and the nuisance board is if we went forward with the Home Street one, and you voted on it, we demo it, the owner does not pay the demolition amount, the one will be put on, on the property. That one would be at the bottom of the last person that's submitted, you know, under the nuisance ordinance throughout the process, no matter when we file it under the nuisance board, it follows directly below the state, the city taxes. The state federal is done, the city taxes, then the nuisance board. So it trumps all the other individual owners.
Do you think that based on, we know who the property owners are. Do you think we would stand a very good chance of getting reimbursement on that, or do you think it's doubtful to you?
I would say pretty doubtful. They haven't paid the one that are in the set.
Aren't most of them in fact doubtful? It's a general rule?
Yes, all of them, some of them have not been paid. I mean, we're sending out letters to them, but we go all past November 30th, first period, you know.
So do you think it would, would matter if we waited and went under the nuisance board with them, knowing...
I don't believe the owner would be paying the demolition amount. There's one of the eight that has submitted the demolition per. They have done that in the past with all three.
So we'll just, commission, whether it's your all's pleasure. What do you have more questions?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question before, I think, a comment. When I read the nuisance, or it looks like it's not going to take effect till January. So right now, we're really under the current one.
Yes, sir.
So the red ones, if they went under current, they would probably fall in line with November, December demolition, because they, they've already been, sent their letters.
Correct.
But the ones that are notified, that are below, they would be sent the new letter, right, the nuisance?
They could, yeah. We've already sent them one under the current rules. We could retract that, give everyone basically till January, try to come into compliance, and then send out new citations in January and a new regulation. We'd receive a letter from one of those owners as well.
I was just like, yeah, we want us to be methodical in what we do, and I think we have been, but when we made this switch, then I don't feel bad for the people that had all this whole, this long time. You know, I've only received one letter of a person that gave some reasons of why, you know, that most of them hadn't done anything. You know, but I also don't want to send these other group an old letter, and we're going to just keep delaying it. One of the times it's going to come in, and we'll be in the same situation, you know, many months from now.
Pressure more to weigh in. And if you don't, if you want to think about it, we don't have to make the decision tonight. We can always have a global agenda between now and the 28th, or if you're fine with leaving it, think you don't have to do anything. But we do, pressure. Thinking on it. We'll just leave it as is for now, and if you change your mind, feel free to. Okay. Thank you. Wow, that's easy. Okay, any old business?
Mayor? I have several, and I know we have some people who want to present tonight. I was just going to ask if we can take discussion items first, and then move to old and new business after.
Okay, there's no objection, we'll do that. First item of discussion items, we had, does anybody, do we know if anybody needs to make a presentation because they're on a time deadline or anything? Just go ahead. Just go down the list. Okay, let's go down the list. Bond financing cash flow presentation from Raymond James. Who's going to make that? Bob Pennington.
Care if I join the tip? Don't worry about it. You've got a handout, it might be easier if I slide up here.
Thank you, Mr. Pennington. Do you all know Bob Pennington?
Hi, Bob.
Hello. Got a couple of handouts here, and then we'll get started. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Bob Pennington with Raymond James. I live here in Frankfurt. I've been working with the city for some time now on different projects over the years, but more extensively with the sewer capital plan, and that's what I'm presenting on tonight. We have been working, I guess for a number of years on the overall capital plan, and what we've talked at these meetings before is that this is a fluid process. Things change, projects change, funding changes. There's a, there's a number of things that will change over the years, and it's a process that staff has to stay on top of, which they have. We've had extensive meetings with Tim and Steve and Bill on the modeling of the capital, of the sewer capital plan. What that has involved is essentially rolling out projects, figuring out when the projects are going to need to come online, and how we're going to pay for those projects. And some of the deep, we're not going to get into the detail that Steve and Tim and Bill and I have gone through, but we've gotten into numerous, numerous scenarios and pages of data where we've analyzed the rollout of the projects in coordination with a mix of bonds and cash. And that's, that's what we're going to talk about today, is how that might work going forward. Before I get into that, I will state that I think it was two or three years ago, I sat right here, and we were looking at a similar model, and what, and we were trying to decide whether a rate increase was necessary. And it was at that meeting that, and it might have been, I might be confused, but it was at one of those meetings that we decided that, at the time, the rate increase was not necessary, but what we would do in the fall of 2013 is come back before the commission and look at it and see where we are. As I mentioned, it's a fluid process, it's a hands-on process in managing it, and really that's what we're doing and have been doing. What we have done, just for a basis, when we talk about the model, we've used the most recent numbers. We've used your unaudited 2013 revenues and expenses. We've taken those numbers, we forecasted them forward, actually 20 years, which is a little long for a forecast, but we've forecasted them forward, and we've worked with Bill and his staff in rolling, rolling out the projects when they're needed, and tried to determine best on how they're going to be funded, meaning cash, or bonds, or a mix of the two. Also, in the middle of that, the cities received some nice KIA awards, very nice KIA awards, 20-year, 20-year money at an interest rate of 1.95%. So it's awesome, it's an awesome amount of debt to roll into your, to your debt profile, and it helps with some of these projects. We've made an assumption that construction expenditures over the next five years will be approximately $50 million. It could be a little higher, it could be a little lower, and we've made an assumption that those dollars would be rolled out about $10 million per year, and these are dollars necessary to meet your EPA requirements. We've also made assumptions using your existing cash balances as of June, June 30 of 13, and we've forecasted those balances forward, drawing from those balances, accruing some interest on those funds, and, you know, using those in the, in the overall model. What I'd like to do, and again, this is a single page of a bunch of scenarios, there was, there was times that I think I probably made Tim and Bill and Steve dizzy looking at all the different options, but we've really tried to narrow it down to four. And if you look at scenario one, I'll just run through this. Scenario one is, is not a scenario that works, but what it, what it is, it assumes your annual inflationary increase of two and a half, approximately 2.5% that goes into place in July of each year. It does not assume any more rate increases, and it assumes all your projects are funded with cash. Cash balances today are, in the different funds that can be utilized for sewer, approximately $19 million. So you can quit, you can imagine that if you funded everything with cash, you're going to deplete your cash within two or three years. So that's what this scenario shows. Scenario one shows all cash is expended. You have a minimum and a maximum during the first 10-year period. The maximum dollar amount is $19.5 million. That's, that's what you have in the various accounts, and it, and it goes negative. So obviously, that is not a scenario that works on an all cash basis with no rate increases. Scenario two, it's just like the first option. It's all cash funded. Now, what we have done is we have structured a rate increase of 7.5% that would go into effect, really this is, would go into effect January 1 of 14. This model is shown at July of 114, just for modeling purposes, to stay consistent with the inflationary increases. So it shows a 7.5% increase in 14, and a 7.5% increase in 16. As you can look on down the column there, you'll note that the 10-year, the 10-year minimum is a little better, but it's still negative. So what's that, what's that mean? Cash funding your projects, or funding your projects with all cash will, is not sustainable. It will not work. If you move to scenario three, this is where we get into a mix of cash and bonds. And we, we've looked at using just a minimal amount of bonds, all the way to all bonds, and we've looked at everything in between, every imaginable scenario in between. But what we've come out, come up with is a scenario that's almost 50% bonds and 50% cash, okay? Now, you, for tax purposes, you can't just hold your cash. I mean, you're a municipal entity, you're issuing tax-exempt bonds, you can't just hold your cash. But you have to be prudent. You have to have a certain amount of cash on hand for future projects, for emergencies, for general operations. So what we've looked at is essentially a 50-50 split between cash and bonds, which you'll notice on, there's a row, it's called date bonds issued. We've got, we have structured a bond issue in December 1 of 13, December 1 of 15, and December 1 of 17, okay? This scenario three does not have a rate increase. And as you can follow the column on down, you'll see your minimum cash balance in the first 10 years, your minimum cash drops to about $1,007,000. That's getting a little low, okay? That's getting a little bit low. That's about 90 days cash on hand versus your expenses in, I think it's year 2019 in the forecast. So that's a little low. Your maximum, again, is year one, that's your cash in hand. You could, you could go forward with a no rate increase in a mix of cash and bonds like I've described here. Scenario four, scenario four takes the 2014 rate increase off the table. It assumes a rate increase July of 16. Again, these are just models, okay? These are just to look at. It assumes a rate increase of July of 16, again, with a mix of cash and bonds. You've got the bonds, again, issued in 2013, 15, and 17. And then you can see your minimum cash amounts, $4,665,000. I think that's also in year 2019 in the pro forma, or the forecast. That's about six months cash on hand, okay? Also, you can see, again, the cash up front, $19,563,000. So if you look at the, if you look at the model, or think about how the model would look, you would, you would roll out a mix of bonds and cash. The bonds would be issued about every other year. There would be three, three series of bonds, and between those bond issuances, you would utilize your cash. Our goal here is to do two things. One is maintain enough cash reserves to where this commission is comfortable, and we have adequate, you know, reserves on hand. Number two, maintain our bond rating. We've got a very strong bond rating, as you know. It's AA minus by Standard and Poor's. If you, if you recall reading any of the reports, one of the things that was emphasized was strong cash position, and we want to, we want to demonstrate that we continue to have a strong cash position. The other thing is, we want to be able to demonstrate having a strong debt coverage ratio. And what that means, it's your, it's the ratio that, it's your net operating income over your debt service, basically. And you want to be able to demonstrate that you have a strong debt coverage ratio. One, for, to be prudent and to manage your cash flows properly, but also to maintain that strong bond rating. So if you look at the scenarios, scenarios one and two, highlighted in yellow, do not work. Those are the all cash funds. You know, scenario one has a, has no rate increase. Scenario two has the rate increase that we were to revisit, you know, this fall. Scenario three and scenario four demonstrate the mix of cash and bonds. And as you can see, both of these scenarios work. They, they work well. Scenario three would be what I recommend, and the recommendation is to hold up on the rate increase, and, you know, I don't know, I don't know how the commission or the council would like to, to review that, but I think last time, we didn't delete it, I think we postponed it and looked at it at a later date. So, you know, that would be at the commission's option. But scenario three, right now, from a modeling standpoint, would be the recommendation from, from our team, from our staff, and, and that, again, is holding off on the rate increase, monitoring the cash flows, monitoring how the projects come in from a bid standpoint, monitoring the, you know, how, you know, what rates the bonds are sold. There's a lot of different issues out there. But the recommendation would be to, to go forward with no rate increase, and to go forward with a mix of bonds and cash. Under this scenario, the way we have modeled and worked with, worked with staff, would assume a bond issue of December 1 of 13. And that, that's kind of the same analysis that we looked at a few years ago, a need to have a bond issue this year. Now, I'll stop and pause here. I rambled on quite a bit, and ask questions, and see where the commission would like to go. If not, I'll describe the, the process that would, that would need to occur to go ahead and get the bonds in place.
Could you give what our current debt coverage ratio is, and what it would change to under scenario three?
The current debt coverage ratio is above three times, which is very strong. Normal debt coverage ratios in the industry are 120 or better, 1.2 times or better. And again, what that means, it's revenues minus expenses, add back depreciation, you have net operating income, and it's your net operating income over your debt service. So today, you're north of three times. So it's very, very strong. Now, that is not, that is not, you know, that's not sustainable into the future, once you start issuing bonds. The debt coverage ratio under scenario three, in the forecast, it drops, it drops to like the 160 range out in...
So it's still...
Oh, yeah, it's very solid. It's very good.
So that's why that was recommended over, over four, because in four, there were rate increases?
Well, four, you start to accumulate actually too much, too much cash in the latter years.
Okay, because then it's going to go to like maybe 10 or 12 times. Okay, because then it's going to go to like maybe 10 or 12 times.
No, it doesn't jump up that much.
It doesn't go back?
No. It's modestly greater. I mean, you're really, in scenario four, you're talking a modest, you're talking a rate increase of 7.5% in year 2016. But, you know, our recommendation is, again, to continue monitoring the situation, you know, roll out the projects, utilize your cash, roll out the debt, and see where you are two years from now.
I mean, that's it. Really, scenario three and four are the same things, because obviously, if we don't have any money, if we don't have enough money and we're not doing well, then we'll go ahead and have that rate increase in 2016, and we'll cut costs, or we'll string things out, or whatever. So it seems like a good proposal to me, if you're comfortable.
Commissioners, any questions? If not, well, we could, because we're going to, I think we're going to spend about $12 million in projects.
Well, we've got a mix. I mean, you still spend some cash each year when we roll out projects.
That's what I'm saying. I'm sorry. I said, "We're going to spend $12 million." We're going to spend that much in cash, approximately, and the rest is going to be bonded.
Well, what you're going to do is, the way the model works, is we're going to roll out a bond issue, where we proposed to roll out a bond issue in '13 of about, just under $10 million. And we'd use those bond proceeds with a minimal amount of cash to fund future, you know, fund upcoming projects. And then in '14, we would come back and utilize mostly cash, about $10 million, approximately.
Okay, because I was thinking, "12," I was thinking for some reason, because we're going to pay for those, we're going to stagger those payments as they come due.
Well...
I mean, I'm trying to figure out in my head the cost of that, but because the rates are, I mean, it's still, we can't arbitrage.
No.
That's what I was trying to figure out, how to, how to, we did it, there was one year we did on the Public Safety Bill, we were able to do a one-year arbitrage because of something, I don't remember.
Well, here, the rates are, you know, the reinvestment rates, I mean, you have to spend your cash, you have to spend tax-exempt proceeds on a schedule. But the reality, unfortunate reality that we're in today, the reinvest rates are quite a bit lower than the taxes and borrowing rates.
You might be referring to Bobby Stretch, that first plan that came out for the Public Safety Bill in 16 years.
We did do that.
Paid interest only.
Is that what you referred, yeah, we...
I just didn't know if there was a way we could do it again.
Well, what we did on the Public Safety Building, we had a 16-and-a-half-year term where the first year and a half was interest only. And we certainly, we certainly can look, and we have looked at models like that. What we have modeled now, and really, we're doing this to take advantage of still very, very low interest rates, we've modeled 25-year terms, okay? Each of the three proposed series are 25-year bond issues. That could change. I mean, the yield curve could steepen, and it might make more sense to do a 15-year again.
But we're going to monitor and see what we'll suggest.
That's correct.
Okay. I don't even, I mean, I'll, we'll think about those options.
Good job. Now, would you like me to talk about the, kind of, the process?
Schedule. I think five minutes or so on the schedule.
Yeah, just cut me off, we're not going to talk too much. What we're proposing is to issue the first, really, it would be the, I guess this would be the third series of bonds that we've issued for sewer, but we're proposing a bond issue in December of 2013. And this schedule, like, this schedule will lay out the steps. Obviously, today, we're here at a city commission work session on the 14th. We would have documents drafted, the starting of documents draft, the week of October 21st into October 28th. Next city commission meeting, we're not proposing any formal action. You can see on the week of November 4th, we would begin to engage the rating agencies and submit them the necessary information to receive the rating on the upcoming bond issue. I've got the November 12th through 22nd blocked off. November 11th, I believe, is a holiday, so I'm not sure you'll have your regular meeting then. So November 12th through 22nd, we would ask for a special reading, if permitted, to have the first reading of the ordinance.
Oh, yeah. The commission, we don't know yet what the commission's availability is going to be. That's what we're going to hopefully...
And there's alternatives. I mean, we can, we can back up to the 28th, although it pushes it a little bit, or, you know, we can delay. We don't want to delay too much, because you don't want the bond issue getting into the holiday season. So November 12th through 22nd is a kind of a block to try to have, you know, a special meeting if possible. November 25th is your next regularly scheduled commission meeting, where we would ask second reading of the ordinance, and, you know, the ordinance will approve all bond documents. After the 25th meeting, the offering documents would be posted, meaning they're available to the marketplace. November 27th is really a tickler for us to get the notice put in the newspaper for publication. December 10th would be the proposed bond sale date. We're also looking at a date of December 5th, which is the Thursday before. And then we would proceed towards, you know, once we price the bonds. The bonds are priced through competitive bid. You'll have various broker-dealers in the region and possibly nationally to bid on your bonds, and basically, it's the low-interest rate purchases the bonds. But that would occur on either December 10th or December 5th, and then we would move towards a closing, really, the week of December 16th, and then you would have proceeds in hand. So that's a quick, kind of, summary of how that would work. You know, this structure, this strategy is one we've used for the commission on prior bond issues.
So we would do a special meeting for the first reading sometime on the 22nd, and then second reading on the 25th.
That, yeah.
How necessary is it to do this bond issue this year and not do it till 2014?
Well, it's a good question. You know, one, we've analyzed cash. There's approximately $12 million in cash needs in the coming year. The other critical point is, we need to deploy about $10 million in cash, okay, or in bonds. And there's tax, there's federal tax law rules that allow bonds to be designated what's called "bank-qualified." We've always attempted to issue bank-qualified bonds, and it allows for more aggressive bidding on your bonds, meaning lower interest rates. So the way it works is the bonds can be deemed "bank-qualified" if the city, if the commission issues no more than $10 million in a calendar year, okay? So if we issue this year, we would be bank-qualified. If we go into next year and we want to deploy $10 million in bonds, and there happens to be another project that needs to be bonded, it would break through our "bank-qualified" for that year. In essence, you'd have higher interest rates. So that, you know, one driving force is the need for cash, two is the "bank-qualified" decision, and it's an important one, because it greatly affects your interest rates. And then, three, we are still in a very nice interest rate environment. And, you know, one thing that we've always talked about when we meet, in our meetings, is let's not lose the opportunity that we have before us. Let's deploy some bonds before the rates take off on us. They've taken off a little bit already. Let's don't, you know, let's don't wait too long in the game before rates really take off. So, again, the need for cash, the BQ, and taking advantage of current interest rates.
And if I may ask staff some questions, if you don't mind. Steve, where does that, where does this financially put us? If we bond this at $10 million, where does that put us in order to bond other money out in 2014, say for aquatics or swim play or something of that nature?
I think that that's exactly what he was referring to. If we decide to do anything like that, it frees up us to be able to, you know, bond money in 2014 and still be bank-qualified.
Does it hurt our rating if we bond now to get another rating later?
I think we're in pretty good shape, based on those bond to being able, the ability to pay our debt service, you know, we're strong there. And that's what Bob was referring to, those ratios earlier in his comments.
And what, how much can we bond out for another project if we do $10 million here? Where's that?
Well, I mean, you know, if you do "bank-qualified," assuming you do another, you go up $10 million right in a year, right by...
Yeah, one thing, "bank-qualified" will affect your sewer bonds and your GO capacity. GOs paid from taxes, and sewer is paid from sewer revenue. So you have to separate them for those, you know, from where the revenue streams come from, but for "bank-qualified" purposes, they're combined. So you're, if there was, and I'm not sure what you refer to, I think aquatic or fun park, if that was funded, it would likely be funded through G...
Fun park.
I'm sorry, I called it wrong.
No, it's fine.
You would think I would know the correct terminology. But that would be likely funded out of GO, okay? And then, these are funded out of your sewer revs. So they're separate in that regard, but they do affect the federal "bank-qualified" rules. That's why we need to separate them for that purpose.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Do you have others?
No, I think that opened, that answers it. I mean, basically, what I have is what's best for the long term, how much can we bond now, and how does this restrict us in the future? And I think that basically answers those three questions.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Well, thank you, Mr. Pan.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good evening.
Central parking, please. Come forward.
Go ahead, yeah. Use it.
Good evening, guys. Thank you for having me. I'll hand this around. My name is Ben Stefan. I am the senior manager with Central Parking in central Kentucky. Frankfort's parking garage here at Sullivan Square is actually near and dear to my heart. It's where I cut my teeth and park. I've retired on here. Almost four years ago now, I was the area manager, and I've moved on up. So this project's always been something that's been a project I like to watch. Steve has helped me tremendously over the years. He and I have stayed in close contact on this thing. I wanted to talk to you all tonight a little bit about the Sullivan Garage, especially the financial trends that we've seen over the last five years. 2008...
Do you have one more? Do I have one?
Yeah.
I thought I brought a pen.
Thank you.
But in 2008, that was the last year we did a rate increase at the garage. We did a 10 cent per hour transient rate increase, taking hourly rates from 65 cents to 75 cents, and our monthly rate went from $18 a month to $21 a month. I included on that, the second page there, a survey of all the garages in the central Kentucky area, in Lexington and Danville, as you can kind of go through that. We're a little bit behind where some other folks. The one that really I like to look at is Danville. Danville, Kentucky is $46 a month. They are budgeted for a $1 a year increase every single year on that monthly rate. So just to kind of give you a sense of where we are in comparison with everyone else. But the thing, the reason I'm in here tonight and wanting to talk to you all, '09, 2010, 2011, all good years. The courthouse moved out, we saw our revenues begin to dip, we managed to keep our expenses going in the same direction. Most of that was through Central Parking taking my position and eliminating it. I went from being full-time here in town, this was all I had, to I started working with Lexington properties as well. So we were able to take a lot of my salary away, push it off to Lexington, some of it as well, when my boss left and I came up. I purposely didn't replace myself for a handful of months, which kept expenses down here. This is the first year where we've had a full-time manager here the whole year. He hasn't been here the whole year, he's still splitting his time, but that's why we saw our expenses jump back up to that 2009 level. It's kind of disappointing, but we've found every possible expense that we can cut out of our budget and have cut it over the last five years. So there are two options for solutions, or a combination of two, that I wanted to talk to you all about tonight. One is combining the off-street and on-street program, and this is something that Chief Will Hoyt and I have gone round and round about for several years now, trying to figure out how to make it work. I believe there's a way to incorporate on-street parking into what we already do for you all with the off-street operation of the garage. Automate the garage and better utilize the staff that's here, with the chief's staff and with my staff that are here, already doing parking in a way that doesn't increase our expenses past where the revenues are, and it gets us to a breakeven. That's always been what I've understood that the parking program in Frankfort was about, was getting to a breakeven, especially on the off-street. I think there's a very viable way to do it with some of the technology we have. Chief, you can kind of jump in here and tell them how excited you are about some of the stuff we've shown you, but it's, some of the things that are in the ordinance is currently that police are having trouble enforcing with the equipment that they have. We have the equipment...
The current ordinance allows for a graduated fine schedule, or tickets issued to the same vehicle within a calendar year. But the problem is, is we cannot get that information to the citation officer out on the street. That person would not know whether it's the first, fifth, or sixth ticket that year. They would only know that hour, that day. And Central Parking has a solution for that with a database that's available outside and a ticketing system.
Right. We already do citations across the country. We do them in Lexington on our private properties. We do them elsewhere in public settings like this. Our IT team is actually working right now to see, it is possible, but to see how long it's going to take to implement some of the things that the chief and I talked about for this particular project, to rewrite that handheld software in such a way that it works exactly how it's supposed to. The citation officers on the street get the information they need right then and there. The reason I think we'll be able to keep our expenses in line with what the revenues become is that, once we can identify those scoff laws that are ignoring the fact that they're on their fourth, fifth, sixth violation, and the chief can't write the necessary fines, we'll be able to enforce those fines properly. So while it seems like if I'm going to use all the existing people that are here and the existing resources, well, that should push expenses way, way up, I think the revenues, I'm sure the revenues are going to stay in line with it. The second solution, and this is the reason I say I'd like to see some combination thereof, is increasing our rates within the garage. We haven't increased any of the rates since 2008, and as I pointed out, we are way, way behind. It's not that I think we need to be in line with Lexington, it's not that I think we need to be in line with Danville even, but when our competition down the street, Mike Templeman has opened a garage and is charging $50 a month, we kind of take stock, especially when he's starting to get people to roll into his garage and pay that monthly rate. I think there's some room for upward, an upward push for these rates. And another reason I'd like to see rates increase, instead of just the same thing that Steve and I have been doing the last four or five years of trying to put more people in, a $2 rate increase, just to put it in perspective, a $2 across-the-board rate increase for all of our monthly parkers. We have roughly 500 paying monthly parkers, so that would equal about $1,000 a month. We're at about a $1,200 to $1,500 a month shortfall, so a $2 or $3 increase would more or less eliminate our shortfall. To get the same push from monthly parkers, we're looking at 50 to 75 new monthly parkers. The reason that's so difficult is that we already have over 500 monthly and transient parkers in that garage, and it's only a 495-space garage. So while there's some room for overflow and there's some room for turnover, at some point, we're going to have to pay that price, that there's nowhere else to put people. We can't just keep jamming them in and hoping to fit another 100 parkers in there, especially if some of the on-street enforcement gets a little bit more severe or a little, what's the word I'm looking for, chief? A little bit...
draconian, I believe, is what we used one...
That's a word I like. if some of the on-street enforcement gets a little bit more severe or a little, what's the word I'm looking for, chief? A little bit?
Trichotilline, I believe, was what we used.
That's a word I like. But, you know, if we see a, a better enforcement effort on the street, we're going to see a lot more parkers in that garage, and we're going to see us running out of space. So, do you guys have any questions for me that I can answer?
Just real quick, I mean, all that makes sense to me. I guess the only thing I'm a, a little cautious about is obviously your monthly rate is so much lower here because of your demand. Obviously, you know, if there was this huge demand and that place was full every day, you'd be raising your rates if we gave the, if, how many, how many, how many empty spots do you have on average?
On an average day, about 100, 150. Now, something with that too, the rates, the way that our agreement works, we run under a management contract, meaning that all of the profit comes back to the city.
I understand that.
Okay, I wanted to make sure.
But I, but I guess it's still sort of the same point, which is if there was a shortage of spaces, there might be more room to increase.
Yes, yes.
Just because of, from a demand standpoint.
Exactly. That's the thing we see in Lexington. We have several lots in Lexington that, that Central Parking leases. We are, these are surface lots, 91 and 182 are the two I'll pick on there at the corner of Shorten Mill and Shorten Market. Shorten Market is about 80 monthly parkers for a 91-space lot, so the rate is $104 a month. Shorten Mill is about 135 parkers and 182 space lot, it's $99 a month. And it's because, exactly like you're saying, there's not, there aren't, there aren't spaces available there. So that rate keeps getting pushed every single year. It's not a, let's wait five years and increase the rates. It's every single year, we're seeing a CPI increase on that particular property.
Chief, on the, utilizing the staff differently and their people differently to try to be more efficient in collections, et cetera, how, will that benefit you guys, I assume, both with the technology and perhaps you could even utilize your people differently in different capacities in enforcing parking? Is that accurate?
That's correct, that's correct. If we, if we use Central Parking particularly for the collections, that would make it basically one-stop shopping, you know? You can pay your ticket through them, you could pay your garage through them, you know, we wouldn't have to send out letters of notice and things like that. It would be handled more on the civil side than it, than it would be over there. Somebody doesn't pay over here for a period of time, if we don't get a hold of their car, then we have to take them to court, you know, get a summons for them, that type of thing.
So you'd be in favor of this?
I, I would be. And the main thing is, is enforcing the ordinance the way it's written. I, I think it's, because you, you looked at fifth ticket, fifth ticket in a year is 100 bucks. And you're going to get a lot of people who laugh at that chalk mark right now, or wipe it off, or move two spaces down. They're going to pay a lot more attention to what they're doing downtown. And like we've said before, with the courthouse opening back up, the number of people that are going to be down there on, particularly on Tuesdays and Thursdays, it's, it's going to grow. And one other thing that wasn't mentioned, that you kind of touched on with the surface lot, you know, the city still owns a surface lot behind the Paul Soder library with, how many spaces are there? 32?
I was going to say about 35.
35 spaces back there. That could also be patrolled or, you know, added, added to that.
Well, there's also space that the city has access to over, across from the history museum as well. Yes, no?
I don't know. It's nothing that we patrol or enforce. So, in short, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want to add one now. With, with a rate increase, since you kind of touched on that lightly, how many people do you think we may lose? Just a few?
Less than 10% for sure, probably less than 5%. The competition, if they go down the street to the St. Clair Garage, it is $50 a month. So if we did, say, a $2 rate increase to $23 a month, they could either stay at 23 or go to St. Clair and pay 50.
Ben, is there any, the last increase we had was 2009, right? Did we lose, you know, have you ever seen?
I never did see those, because that was prior to the current system that we're using.
That's the last time we got a rate increase.
But the most likely place for those folks to go if they don't want to handle that rate increase is out to the streets and out to places where they're not supposed to be.
Can you guys do all for daily?
Yes. Yes, I would like to see it go to a dollar an hour. It's currently 75 cents, some for convenience, some for ease, but also too, if something went through with the on-street being combined with off-street, part of the idea we had for automating the garage was to use the cheapest equipment possible. Rather than doing the $250,000 Cadillac, let's go get the $30,000 Corolla. There's a machine that we could utilize that would be less than $25,000 to get installed and have operate. The drawback is it's, it's a flat-rate charging machine. So having it charge 75-cent flat rate, or 250 flat rate, or something along those lines, isn't very feasible. Every time you add pieces to it, so a coin operator would cause it to go up in price, it would also cause the jams to go up. Be nice to get it to just a flat dollar, so we could say, hey, it's $2 to enter and exit all day, keeping from having to eliminate transient. I don't ever want to see that go away in the garage.
Would it still be open for free on Sundays for churches?
That's up to the commission. That's certainly something that can be done. It's also currently open on Wednesday night for the First Baptist Church down there, and that's, all those things can be done. The gates can be lifted with the automated equipment that can actually be lifted from a cellphone. So it's, it's not trying to change everything. It could even be left open after 5:00 PM, which it currently is right now. It could be, the gates could be put down after 5:00 PM. But we've looked into some of that before, even with the Friday night concert series. One of the concert nights, I actually stayed and tried to collect revenue, and we saw 14 people parking the garage. And there were easily that many spaces on the street and in the side surface lots right around the garage. So it just isn't a draw at night and on the weekends like some of the garages in Lexington or Louisville are.
Would it also be fair that, to say that you need better signage?
We're working through, trying to figure out a better sign package to put in on the garage. Now, two years ago, I did a survey for the city where I drove the city and helped identify about a dozen places around town where a sign should go up on a signpost pointing towards the garage.
How many of those signs got put up?
Couldn't tell you.
Because I feel that signage is a, is a big issue too, when it comes to, especially, it's not to say that, that it's a new garage, or that it's under new management or anything, but that...
Something on the exterior of the building that screams parking?
Right. Or a sign that says, hey, there's parking over here. But most people are going to opt to try to park for free on the street if they can.
Sure.
But then you hear all the time, like I hear a lot of people who'll say, well, I just don't go downtown because I don't know where to park and I don't know where to go, like, so I...
One of the things we tried four years ago was that the police actually put flyers. Every time they issued a citation, they also put a flyer, had a map of downtown with where the parking garage was located, how to get to it, along with all the daily and monthly rates listed on the flyer. It also had a contact phone number and email for Central Parking to try to encourage people, because you're right, it's...
And even if you're coming from out of town, like if I were to Google parking in downtown Frankfurt, it tells me to call Central Parking in Lexington.
Right. It's, it's part of our Lexington operations.
And it shows me a Lexington map, which doesn't really take me to parking in Frankfurt. But, I mean, it's just little, just little things, I'm just...
Let's take the chief one down.
One other consideration, if we do this, is consider the impact it would have on the residential areas downtown, because people will push out of the two-hour parking into the areas on Wapping and Wilkinson and those areas. So, now there may be some unintended consequences from that that we may have to address later on, perhaps, I don't know. But I would, I would assume that, you know, folks downtown wanting to escape or evade that area would, would naturally gravitate to those areas that aren't enforced.
One of the nice things with our equipment, chief, would be that we could issue hand tags to those folks that belong in those residential areas, that the equipment can pick up.
I do like the idea that you brought about not doing 75 cents on anything. It is a dollar, $5. Most people that go to, when I go to any town, it's normally always a whole number, and I really don't care what it says, as long as it ain't $50 a day. But, you know, $10, any sporting event I go in, and that's a given, you're going to pay for that, or you can have something on the challenge. So this is very cheap.
Well, and the 25 cent to, it's a dollar and a half, a little over $5. Ends up adding about $800 annually to the bottom line. It's, you know, it's a nice step, but it's not going to be everything we need. One of the other things I will point out is that back in 2009, which was the last year the courthouse was here, I know it's not broken down there for you, but our transient revenue, meaning daily revenue, was looking at, was right around $5,000. This year, it's looking like, more like 2,000. So there's several thousand there that hopefully, as the courthouse comes back, that'll push back in. Monthly revenue, same kind of thing, we're hoping we add some of that back, but it's getting more expensive. In 2009, it cost $800 to pressure wash the parking garage after the winter to get salt out. EPA regulations have gotten much more strict. It's now $10,000 to pressure wash the garage, because all the drains run straight out into the river. We can't just rinse it down anymore. We have to collect all that water.
So what do you need from us to go ahead and say that we'll go with this and see what everybody thinks, but we go with this and go with the rate increase, and that takes care of the problem for now?
A rate increase of $2, of $4, it's a temporary fix.
But you're saying $2 and then do this other thing you believe will work?
For at least the next several years.
That's simple to me.
Do you need a more formal proposal and presentation from Central Parking as far as this is concerned?
I think as long as, I'm fine with it, as long as the churches still can use it for free.
Absolutely. This is still your garage to tell us how to run.
You might say one thing, Ben. On the financial statement right now, you see the financial statement? You don't see the losses on the financial statement because of Ben and I discussed this, we're just, we're kind of passing checks back and forth for about a couple of years. You know, one month I paid him, one month he paid me, but debt, you know, we're, like you said, we're losing $1,000, $1,200. But we're going to settle up at the end of the year, and you'll see that loss reflected in your December financial statement, so just FYI.
Thank you.
When would you like to see the rate increase?
January 1? Do you want to just do January 1? Yes.
Okay. And then as far as the on-street, do you need a more formal presentation?
We probably need to check and see if any ordinances need to be renewed or rebarked. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Okay. Next one is NextLife CDBG project.
There were several questions.
Oh, you're just doing it because...
We had asked our head manager at the hall to provide some information, just don't know anybody from PC.
That's fine.
Well, I'm here for, first, may I approach?
Yes.
First of all, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission, I apologize for being a representative, coming in a little late, coming in on two wheels from Lexington, even though I live here, but it looks like I have plenty of time, so.
Yeah.
But hey, it's always enjoyable. Basically, there were some questions concerning the NextLife CDBG Economic Development Grant. And I wrote that grant for you all, for the, for the city.
Oh, can you mind just, for the record, just saying, the clerk needs to just hear your...
Yes, Madam Clerk. My name is George Lehman. I'm one of your Facebook friends.
I knew you, but the tape is blind.
I understand, I understand all the times.
And just so you're representing...
I'm representing Bluegrass Area Development District. And I did, I did basically write this grant on behalf of the city. And this grant was a million-dollar grant that was awarded when the company, the predecessor of NextLife was Mountain Valley Recycling, to kind of refresh everybody. So I wrote the grant, the grant was awarded. As you all know, even as I noticed, coming out of Leestown Road, coming to this meeting tonight, the "For lease, for sale" sign is on the building. I have not seen an official warrant notice to know that they have uprooted and gone permanently, but anyway. I was asked to come tonight, address any questions that the commission may have concerning that grant. And Solicitor Moore and I had spoken on the phone a little bit about the legally binding agreement, and I do have a copy of that with me tonight, if you, if you need that. That legally binding agreement was written by Bob Kellerman at SKO, and basically that was, his legal fees were paid for by KCDC. And then Mr. Moore reviewed that, and I've got documentation of that. Reason why I'm here, answer any questions you may have.
Do you want to ask some specific questions, or that can help?
What does the city own in that building?
Okay.
Per the grant?
Sure.
What's ours?
Basically, the way the grant is written, the city is the recipient of the grant award. KCDC is the sub-recipient. The material, or, excuse me, the, the equipment that's in that facility is tagged KCDC, and there is an inventory list that's been, that's been recorded with the clerk. We can give you that, that list. Basically, everything should be in there. If they up and go, there is a million dollars worth of equipment at the time it was purchased in there. So basically, to my knowledge, and quickly from my own knowledge, Rebecca, they've repaid back about 300,000, and I'm using an approximate number there, folks. So there's still liability, 700. So you've got a couple of options. You can basically go in, get your equipment, try to resell it, or you can try anything to get rid of the equipment. You're not going to probably get $700,000 out of equipment, we all know that. This is very typical in these type scenarios. I've dealt with these in the past, and it's, it's nothing new in the Commonwealth or even the CDBG program for something like this to happen.
So KCDC is currently, I think, looking at avenues to sell that equipment, I believe.
When I talked to Kim Smith, Kim and I were kind of playing a little bit of running down the road on the phone, she's on vacation this week, I was on vacation last week, and you are correct, Commissioner, she is, or KCDC is looking at avenues, I assume, working with Solicitor Moore to, to get that equipment marketed. But as far as the, the remaining balance, Mayor May received a, a letter back in August 21. This grant is closed. So the only thing that the city really has to do to worry about, if you will, meeting requirements of the Department of Local Government or the federal government, is to keep the records for five years. That's the main requirement. So as far as the $700,000, it's you all, as the grant recipient, being the city of Frankfurt, to determine how you want to go about collecting that debt.
So we, so we, where's the, so we've got 300 grand already?
That three, again, Commissioner, that's an approximate amount I'm using.
Right, that's all right. Approximately 300 grand.
Approximately $300,000 that has been paid back to KCDC. Now, that should be in KCDC's bank account. Let me remind you of one thing. This is the Economic Development Community Development Block Grant. Those monies that are paid back are typically used for economic development projects, and any use of that money would require Mayor May to basically write a letter, a solicitation to the Department of Local Government requesting to use those funds.
I understand that. I guess is there a, somewhere we can get the information, Rebecca may have this, but something that tells us the parameters under which the money can be expended? In other words, if it needs to go toward economic development, what are the, what are the, because of course, I could, I could... are the, because of course, I could, I could argue anything that we spend money on is economic development.
Sure.
It's not hard to do, so what are the parameters under which we can spend the money?
Commissioner.
Or not spend the money?
I will tell you this, that the, there isn't like a formalized list defining that this is economic development, this is not, this, you know, basically, Mr. Gabe Nickel is the Branch Manager of Economic Development for Department of Local Government, that letter would basically come from the mayor, and then it would go to BLG for him saying, well, he does not think this is economic development.
Okay, so we'd send a letter, and it, and it would be the three hundred grand we've got, what the KCDC has, plus whatever we recoup of this equipment sale?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay. That's, that's a lot of money.
Yes, sir, it is a lot of money, and the good news is, and you've already got three hundred thousand dollars back, I've seen some of these where you don't even have three hundred thousand dollars.
And two of the pieces of equipment out there are pretty valuable. Because Mr. Head and I were out there, got the scoop from the, I guess, the plant manager, whoever that was.
The plant manager, and then we met with the guy who owns the building.
Right.
What kind of equipment are we talking? Is this exercise equipment?
It's a, it was a recycling plant, so the, I guess the equipment that's ours is one that separates the colors, and it's, one thought was that maybe another manufacturing company in town might be able to buy it or use it.
I've never been there, so I don't know what that was.
And all that equipment actually belongs to KCDC?
Yes, it is tagged KCDC, that's correct.
It's not the city's, it's the KCDC's. So that would, since the city contributes and the county contributes to KCDC, it would require, I guess, the board, the KCDC board makes some type of recommendation or just decision on what to do with, how they're gonna try to sell it, correct?
Now, I don't know how much involvement the county would have on this, just because this was, the county was not involved in this economic development project, it was just the city, Frankford.
Which really is strange to me, because it's out.
Because it's the county.
It is unusual, but the county had already used up its allotment for that year, I believe.
I don't remember how it landed in the city's hands, but that's...
So, so who makes the decision on what to use the money for?
Well, I think the decision on what to use the money for, basically, historically, has come from the economic development authorities or the industrial development authorities in different communities.
Yes, sir.
So, basically, I would say that the KCDC board would need to basically work with this Commission and say, we want to use the money in this route, and then Mayor May would then request to utilize those, those dollars.
Too bad we can't use it to pay.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions for me?
Have we had any input, or feedback on what's happened to some of the employees that were at the plant?
Sure, I can tell you...
In terms of their reemployment?
I can tell you this, just from, also from my Bluegrass Area Development District hat, I'm a past workforce director, so that's kind of, kind of my cup of tea, and so I instantly, when I was just going on, did call the HR manager, who basically was one of the last employees to leave, rapid response activities are scheduled, if they have not already been delivered, to all the employees there, so basically, they will be able to find out about retraining, retooling, any pensions that they have, how to take care of those type issues, health insurance, co-bridge, those type issues, they do all those things through the rapid response activities through the Bluegrass Workforce Investment Board. So I did make sure all that stuff was before table.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
We appreciate you coming in.
No problem.
So you had to drive two miles over the speed limit to get here?
No, well, you know, the Chief is a great guy, and I'm gonna drive a little bit. My daughter's going to soccer tournament over here at Sauer, so I'm gonna drive a little over the speed limit. No, I'm kidding. I'm gonna drive to get there.
See if he can give you a...
Yeah, he can give me an escort.
Thank you for coming.
No problem, thank you all very much.
Next is the Family Aquatic Center financing options. Okay. You have Mr. Parrish that's going to introduce, you have someone else that's gonna talk about the project?
Yes, Mr. Dawson is.
Oh.
I'm just gonna introduce, say a few words here. First of all, we have three board members from the Parks Board, we have Chairman Anne French Thomas, board member Polly Coblen, Judy Ziegler, and we have Patrick Hoagland here from Branstadter Carroll, who did our master plan and also have done a lot of work, preliminary work for us at no charge so far, and we really appreciate that. We all know that you all tasked the Parks Board in March to come up with a recommendation of recreation facility, they did, which was move to proceed with an outdoor family aquatic center and do further study on an indoor. So far, you've been presented a, as far as the outdoor family aquatic center, a solid plan with site location, detailed construction, cost analysis. You've also been provided a solid plan for operations and management within the city, and tonight you'll see a solid financial plan without raising taxes and any burden on the general fund. What we're asking, and we all know that they listen to all the options of other, other entities, Swim Play Frankfurt, the FTA, Joy Jeffries Park on the River, you know, took all into consideration, all great projects, we want to make sure the Commission knows, and the Parks Board, we've talked about it, nobody's in competition. If there was a pot of gold at the end of the rainbow, we'd like to build it all for the community and do all. We understand that Swim Play Frankford's going for the General Assembly for state funds in January, which their particular project will require heavy participation with the state, as well as city and county. So what we're asking is to also move forward on the schematic design, and the site survey, and the geotechnical engineering work to be done with, for fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars, which the site survey and the geotechnical engineering's twelve-five, and the schematic design is forty thousand, and that, which would be done through the winter, with the understanding that if things do happen with the General Assembly and Swim Play Frankfurt, that the schematic design could be adapted to any site, not just Juniper Hill. So I want you to understand that that would not be money that is wasted money or done, so it, it's a schematic design that can be adapted to any site if things do happen. If they do not happen, then we've still got the schematic design and done the, done the site survey and the geotechn, geotechnical engineering. So that's basically what we're asking to do through the winter, and I think we'll know by the end of January, early February, General Assembly's priorities and their project priorities, and we can certainly adapt, or we can, you know, see what we need to do at that particular time. So, that's basically what, what's gonna be asked for the voting meeting, or even tonight, for discussion, and like you said, you've been given a solid plan for the site location, detailed construction, cost analysis, a solid plan for operations and management within the city, and tonight, Mr. Dawson's gonna give a solid financial plan without raising taxes or burden in the general budget. So, at that time, any questions, or I'll turn it over to Mr. Dawson.
One quick one, I think.
Yes, sir.
You ran over question numbers, I guess, sure, the schematic design was twelve-five, the geotech analysis?
No, the, the schematic design was forty thousand, that's the big one.
Okay.
And that's the one that can be adapted to any site.
All right.
And I think if you, you have Branstadter Carroll's letter, they, they have also been generous enough to, to put a clause in there, if the site were to be changed after the completion of the schematic design, we propose to include the schematic design revisions as part of the basic services. So they would adapt the site, adapt the schematic design at no charge to any site. Now, there would be geotechnical services and a site survey done, but even at Juniper Hill, if repairs are gonna be done, or let's say, like East Frankfurt, when we had to fill it in, we had to do a site survey and geotechnical services there as well, so.
Thank you.
But that's, any other questions? If not, I'll turn it over to Mr. Dawson for the financial plan.
Does everybody have a copy of the worksheet I passed out, I think, right here on the box?
I left mine. Yeah, I had everything else, but...
The analysis I prepared for tonight is, is very simple, basically, it has two items on there, at first, talks about the note payment, the cost going out, and then it talks about how to pay for that note payment. So we, you know, based on the Commission's request, we're trying to, to show the Commission that we can internally cover the bond costs without any increase in tax or any reduction in service. So first, the note payment, we based it on Branstadter Carroll's projection, we've got a four-point-eight million dollar cost, and, and then we've added a hundred thousand dollars for bond issuance cost, and then we've assumed that we would take five hundred thousand dollars from our reserve, so we'd be financing approximately four-point-four million dollars over twenty-five years at four and a quarter percent, and that's almost three hundred thousand, about two-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars would be the bond cost on that. The next, well, based on, you know, the Parks, the Parks Department Management and their board, we've come up with some ways to pay for that, for that bond. First thing, we've been losing approximately one-hundred-and-seventy thousand to one-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars on operations, the board feels like that there's some opportunity cost here, or opportunities for improvement, we think with a new facility, we'll be able to increase our attendance, we also feel like we could take more advantage of increased concessions, and the combination of those two items, we feel like we can, we can at least break even on the operation of that facility. So that's what, one way we feel like we can pay for the note payment. The second item is, we know if we, we've got a facility that's dilapidated right now, needs a lot of repair, we need a new, I think these are items that Jim has gotten quotes on, we got a, we need a new pool liner, the decking needs to be replaced, the pump room has some repair that needs to be done there, and also some fixtures around the facility, and restroom updates, and I think they had a quote on that at one time, about five hundred thousand dollars. So if you, you know, you spread that over the twenty-five years, the note, it's about twenty thousand dollars a year, so those are repairs that we won't need to do if we, if we move forward with the aquatics there. Next thing, we feel like we can get some money from, from the general public toward this facility, and we targeted two-hundred thousand dollars, spread that cost over twenty-five years, that's approximately eight thousand dollars a year. And then, there's some open positions right now in the Parks Department, and they conceded to try to, and we've, I think we've gone several years without replacing some of these positions, in some, in some cases, and some of the positions, I know they're gonna fail, but they feel like there's two positions in particular that they can go without, and approximately a hundred thousand dollars a person, that'd be a hundred thousand dollars a year, excuse me, fifty thousand dollars per person, a hundred thousand dollars a year. So the total cost reduction...
I'm gonna raise my hand, boy.
I'm gonna raise.
So, sorry for the misquote, but anyway, there's about two-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars worth of cost reduction, the cost savings, that we feel like we can, we can, we can, we can cut in order to offset the note payment. Any questions or comments, again, I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that?
All the public contribution campaign, has that gonna work? That's the only thing I've got a question on, is where we, how are we gonna target that, how are we gonna get that money?
Well, we thought we could develop a campaign committee and do like an aquatic center broken down into components, and do private, you know, private sector, you know, have a, have a public campaign, we thought that was a realistic number, you know, close to, you know, well, and also, next year, land water conservation grants could become available, and we'll apply for a, for a grant through that, so that would, that would be almost half of that, seventy-five thousand.
And then, one other quick thing, again, the, I guess, there's no way to extend our season, is there, because of the school? Because eighty days, if you can get more days...
Except that, sometimes it's only sixty-six days.
And make more money.
Sure.
Is that the problem, though, is because of the school?
Once, once schools, and perhaps it might be a...
Yeah, we're doing a study of thirty-six schools off in Texas right now, and they keep two of them open here, and the rest of them, they close once history starts to... And a lot of them go until mid-June. Yeah, and it's hot.
It's hot now.
Now, in August, we do extend the Labor Day right now, we do private parties at night, so Juniper's not open to the public, but a lot of these other ones, like, open at four o'clock, you know, some, some days are, you know, it's not full scale, but you can also rent it at night, that's, we have heavy rentals here.
And basically, we've seen the trends over the years, you gotta make your money in June and July, which August first is, is, everybody's on those last minute vacations before they go back to school, your attendance goes down, kids are going, but your lifeguards are going back to school, you really just can't, it's really, really hard to operate a pool financially after August first, even if, you know, you still don't have school guards until the middle of the month, it's still pretty much the case.
Thank you. Any other questions coming through the Commission? Thank you all for your work. Thank you. Next item is nuisance code discussion. Is Solicitor going to cut off, or are there any questions? It's pretty simple, it's pretty laid out in the, I think so, ordinance proposal.
Right, I was just gonna give you about a two-minute review, you know, you all have seen the draft ordinance that's in your package, and basically, what we're doing is we're incorporating the property maintenance code into the nuisance code. The nuisance code would take effect January one, twenty-fourteen, you know, Gary and I just thought it made sense to start it at the beginning of the year instead of the middle of the year, and the property maintenance code would actually terminate on twelve-thirty-one, twenty-thirteen, and any future violations would be issued under the nuisance code. You would have to, to create the nuisance code hearing board, and that would be composed of five people by statute, those people are to be appointed by the mayor, that's what the statute says, and I would think that you would appoint the same people on the nuisance code hearing board that are on the, probably, on the Board of Code Enforcement. The nuisance code hearing board would only handle hearings if there's an appeal from the issuance of a citation, so if, if a citation is, is issued to John Doe, and John Doe pays the, you know, fixes the problem and pays the citation, of course, there's no appeal, or if John Doe doesn't file his appeal within the proper timeframe, then of course, he doesn't get the appeal either, so anyway, the board operates really just exactly like the Board of Code Enforcement. Of course, the benefit is that the lien from nuisance, for a violation of the nuisance code, does take precedence over all other liens except for taxes, and that's the reason why you'd be doing it. The, I would think that the property maintenance code section of the ordinance would be completely stricken from the code book, you know, within six months of January one, twenty-fourteen, because, you know, all the tag-along proceedings under the property maintenance code would have been resolved by then. So we'll probably revise the ordinance mid-two thousand fourteen to do away with the provisions concerning the property maintenance code.
That's it? Any questions? Thank you. Okay, next one, we have the City Commission Employee Health Savings Accounts, it's our Director, Ms. Kathy Fields. Thank you for being here.
Does anyone need the analysis of the health savings account? Do you think it's issued?
I'll take a copy.
Here.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks.
There comes two. There's one more.
We need to...
I keep boring.
I've already got one.
I feel like that, I can smell it. I think I have it too, actually. No, it's just tangible, I like to touch it.
It's okay.
I'd like a part of the field. If the Commission...
If the commission is supportive of increasing the annual contribution to the employees' HSA accounts by $250 annually, we currently contribute $500 to single coverage and $1,000 to family coverage or employee spouse or employee child. So we would be looking at $750 annually for single coverage and $1,250 annually for any of the other coverage tiers. The bottom line is that this analysis shows that if more than seven employees migrate from Plan Two or Plan Three to Plan One, based on our 2013 claims data, we will start saving $2,700 per employee for everyone that moves from a Plan Two or Plan Three to a Plan One. If it's fewer than seven, then actually if we add the $250 to the health savings account, we will lose. And that's it. In a nutshell, that's it. More than seven, the city should, based on current, current claims data, do some savings to their medical plan for the 2014, 2015 plan year.
Per your feedback, if we do this, do you think you can get seven, seven over or?
No.
How's it going?
We've already started open enrollment today and I'm aware of two employees that have moved already to another plan. So there's a possibility that migration could occur already. There are some changes to premiums and plan changes or plan design changes and premium changes that have occurred that employees are taking into consideration.
Mm-hmm.
So I saw two employees move today to a different, to Plan One, that weren't a Plan Two or Plan Three.
And I don't use the, the city insurance, but may I ask a question with that? Is, can they put more in to their health savings account as the year goes by?
Yes.
So if I know I'm having surgery with a knee replacement?
Absolutely.
Then I can just go to that plan, put more money in that account and?
Absolutely. What's probably the most popular is that employees will set a specific deduction, like $20 for pay, $50 for pay.
Yeah.
But they can do, you know, 300 on some if they want to.
At one time?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
What do you think?
Tough one. I'm asking you all what you think.
I, I think it's, I think it is good. I think it, I think it's the way healthcare is going, is that you really just need to, you need to have that plan, but I don't know too much.
I'm hearing that the employees that go in that plan, I hear a lot of good things about it. Several employees that, actually, they had been in it already. They weren't really changing, they were continuing in that plan. One officer told me, he knows of no one who has gotten in that plan that has opted to get out in future years.
Yeah.
So he said, his belief and from employees that I talked to today, which was the beginning of open enrollment, that it's, it's a popular plan with employees who choose. Having said that, the majority of our employees are in Plan Three, which is the traditional coverage and that's where many of our employees feel comfortable. We have about, we have 70 actually in Plan One, we have 165 almost in Plan Three.
Well, you know, in light of the fact that we have done some, done some cost savings for the next year, as far as with spouses, et cetera, you know, I, I, this might be a, a token of trying to do something a little bit better. And it doesn't look like it's going to cost very much. It'd be very valuable for an individual that got the $250, but it doesn't look like there's an overall great cost to the city, even if, even if we eat it all.
Right.
So I would be with Commissioner Hayden and I would say to proceed with the $250.
We already know we've got two migrated, so our loss.
I think you're going to get quite a few more.
You can get a lot more.
Yeah, if we take a loss, it won't be a significant one, but I think the opportunity to get a positive with employees and to actually ultimately save on our year-round cost is more likely.
So let's go with it. Any other questions from the commission?
You got it. You, one, two, three.
I like the way you do that.
Yeah. You got to count.
I don't know if this is the right time in the name to mention. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that, Commissioner. There were some email exchanges earlier today about Affordable Care Act and minimum value with coverage. The question would be if an employee's spouse has coverage through their employer, but that employer is considered not affordable or cost prohibitive per the ACA, would the city view that as not having coverage offered via that employer? Or would the city say, your spouse has the opportunity for coverage regardless of cost, you must sign up? That was kind of the, just a summary as a discussion. And I will add to it that actually I'm aware of only one employee potentially in this situation. And since the emails started, I've learned a bit more about the situation and I'm not sure that that individual.
I think believable.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that individual's coverage would actually be above the threshold of not being affordable. So I can't tell you conclusively with that individual yet which way it will fall, but I'm starting to think that it may fall in the affordability range, in which case the whole discussion would be moved, because I'm only aware at this point of one employee. It comes down to though, if, if a hardship, if somebody really does have to pay 9.5% or more of their annual earnings toward that premium, how the commission would view that. A spouse. A spouse. So that the impact to that family would be a loss of nine and a half percent.
If it's a hardship, I would think that we would be supportive of that, because it doesn't appear that the numbers are going to be that high anyway, but.
It may be zero. But if, if somebody trickles through during our open enrollment period, I would like direction for how we want to handle that.
Shouldn't we go ahead and do that, what you're saying? And then if this ends up being something where we end up with a lot of people involved in it, we can relook at it next year. We're not locked into this forever, are we?
No, definitely not. And I truly can't imagine there would be a lot of people because employees have already been informed about this spousal limitation and I've heard from many about any type of, you know, issues or questions they may have had.
And very few individual coverages are going to exceed 9.5% because most employers are going to pay it or going to pay a portion of it. So it's not going to happen hardly ever.
Hardly ever. It, it's easy to meet the affordability standard. It's got to be very poor coverage to not meet that standard. And then it comes back to, if it's, the coverage is that poor, are we really going to say you have to take it?
Okay. I'll answer that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that concludes that. Commissioner Hayden has some for your business. Now, looking by all steps.
I do, do other people? Let's go through this little list here. Well, I see that goals and priorities have got moved to November, correct? Is that, that's our goal? Is that, is that our goal? To move goals and priorities?
I was hoping to work with the mayor.
Okay.
We did put something in the update that if we could plan a meeting, intentively on the staff level, we kind of thought maybe November 4th, if it's an open Monday, to combine commission goals and objectives and priorities, along with what we hope to be the budget beginnings of your expectations for fiscal 15 budget.
Great.
If that's acceptable.
What time?
You said staff, we have to reschedule the 11th meeting, correct?
Yes.
So we could do that on the 4th possibly?
If that's your choice. You will be addressing that on the 28th of this month. So that's an option for you.
Well, we can, if everybody has, you know what your schedule is, we can send those to the city clerk that you want to. And if the 4th is open, we can.
Well, if the 4th works, why don't we just schedule right now for goals and budget?
Does that take formal action on the part of the commission?
We can just kind of informally do it now.
Stick to the American call.
But do, and then do you want to make that be the reschedule of the, no, but that's going to be too much, you think?
Is it too much for the?
I think, I hope it's.
Wondering about that. It depends on what the workload will be in November. If we have a short agenda.
It is a short month with the holidays as well.
So I wondered if you wanted to.
Can we do a lunch meeting that day?
I have a two o'clock that day. I've been mad, I'm free. We were thinking about doing it at regular time, like five o'clock.
Well, I thought you were talking, I should say five o'clock typically.
The only other thing I know that wants to be on that meeting would be the emails. We got, Madam Clerk, I don't believe you, you got this email, but it was from Troy Hearn with the signage and the bike stuff that we said we will put you on in November. That's the only other thing that I am aware of that would go on that meeting, besides other things that might come up.
Well, I mean, we just made a while.
And maybe we can start, if you want to start earlier, folks' work schedules or availabilities, Commissioner Hayden said at two o'clock.
I can get out by three.
Okay.
So you want to start at three?
3:30?
3:30, I'm going to get my little cushion.
3:30?
I can make it work.
So the meeting's going to be at 3:30.
The items are, can you specify for me?
The goals and objectives and then Commissioner Hayden's, maybe Commissioner Hayden mentioned the thing about the signage issue from the.
I'm not aware of that issue, so.
I know, okay.
We'll send it to you.
The mayor will give you that information.
And there'll be things that'll come down the pike, but I think the big thing is the goals and the budget.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll just have our normal, other things that come down the pike, such as the one you just said, because there'll be, you know, five or six others, I'm sure.
Do, do we now?
So this is the rescheduled work session?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yes, we're clear on that.
And we're going to do goals and objectives on there. And hopefully the staff, hopefully they can have a short agenda. I understand that there's going to be issues that are going to come up that are going to be outside of your control. And I know especially in some departments we have to turn around, grant applications or financials, sometimes those have, okay, so November the 4th. Pretty simple.
Okay, so that takes care of those two. Tom, it's my understanding that we still don't have the information back from the traffic study downtown?
That's correct.
That was just a follow-up, just, okay.
Please have it.
Okay, thank you. Um, that one's off, talked about that. And Tom, another question, I guess this is more new business. Am I just sticking with old right now, right? Can I combine them?
And does any object?
No, no.
No?
Okay, so I'm just going to combine them. So with new business, it'd be, are we also looking at, while we're doing sidewalks, are we looking at St. Clair and Wapping at the bridge as well? Jen Williamson had sent that email out with that extra, and I didn't know if we were looking at that right now or not.
I'm looking at, I'd like to make that corner ADA compatible if I can.
Yes.
I wasn't looking at extending that out right now until we can determine why it was built back that far to begin with. I don't want to build it out there and then all of a sudden you've cut off someone's access behind KSU and then we have to tear it back out.
Uh-huh. Do you think it was just a vision point, that people were using that access, like driving in, that they built it different for a vision?
I don't know. I've been, I've been asking anybody that I can find that maybe you guys are promoting or I called Jeff to see if he knew a history of it. I'm opposed to extending it. I just want to make sure that when we do, we know that we're okay in doing so.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, next. There were some emails that came out in regard to negativity toward doing business in Frankfurt. So I've been thinking and I was wondering with that, and there's other businesses that have been trying to start up, saying they've had some problems, trying to get their business open. If you guys would be willing to maybe in January, set up a small forum with people who own businesses and we can get information from them, wondering what their problems are, so then we know what to work toward to fix. Just asking business owners to come in and?
And we can funnel that to the committee that's meeting every month on that topic already. The problem has been getting much, much to go into the funnel.
Right.
So this is, it's a good idea, let's try it.
And then maybe we can either change ordinances or look at other options that we can do on our level.
That's a great idea.
Okay, so maybe in January, we can start working with, seeing if we can put a list together, business owners we know who?
Either have or have not have.
Yeah, both good and bad.
They need to be specific, they need specifics, not just a general.
Mm-hmm.
Good idea.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I have to write my notes down, I'm not as young as I used to be.
Oh, come on. I know, you're making us sick.
You don't need to be sitting next to me, Landon.
I haven't been able to make it to the stormwater meetings and I was just wondering if, and I know you put them in some of the updates, but maybe just getting a little more information of where we are and where we're going, what kind of rates we might be looking at, if you can maybe get us some information regarding where we are in the process with stormwater utility, a little bit.
Would be happy to. Our next meeting is scheduled for the 23rd at 10:00 a.m. at the library. If, we can have up the two commissioners before we're formed.
It's a Monday, isn't it?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
But we can, if there's, we are still working on a fee structure.
Okay.
I would, we are still working on an organizational structure. Mr. Moore's been very helpful with that. And we are looking at a list of project priorities as we speak, both from city and county. We'll see if the two can be meshed together and we're not quite there yet, to be honest. We are, we continue to meet about every two weeks.
Okay.
And we're putting together information.
Thank you.
But.
Let's have you show up. I got this day job thing that, you know.
Interferes?
Well, I don't know if it interferes, but I can't make it everywhere. I do have a twin sister, though, maybe I can start.
No way, no difference.
Utilizing that. Okay, and then, Solicitor Moore, have we heard anything back on the old Y?
No, we haven't. I haven't heard that. I don't think we're, I don't think the hearing's been scheduled.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have one more. And that would be, the last meeting we were in, the joint meeting with the county in regard to the Swim Play Frankfurt presentation, Squire Wells had made a point saying that maybe it makes sense for us to have our Parks Department mesh a little better. I don't know if you guys meet already, Mr. Parrish, but is there any cost savings maybe? Maybe that would make sense if the city and county parks meshed together a little bit more, maybe having one department for our entire county? Or has that ever been explored in the past? I don't know.
It's been mentioned.
Yes, through the years, I don't know.
I know it's been mentioned, but I don't know if anything's ever.
It's not really been explored, but it's been talked about, but I, I don't know what, of course, they have a budget for Lakeview Park and we have a contract or a memorandum of understanding to use the four athletic fields, which we do and maintain.
Right.
They have an agreement with the Y, with the seven soccer fields, which they do. And they take, you know, they have the Carter House and the Nine Hole Golf Course and the two pavilions.
Right.
And we also have the city-county nursery there, I don't know if you do that, through our urban forestry department, is at Lakeview Park. So we have worked well with Lakeview, you know, through the years, we get along just fine. So I, I don't know the advantage of it. Well, financially, I don't know if there'd be any advantage, but.
But all I think is maybe it's worth exploring and if it is a financial advantage for both the city and the county taxpayers. I don't know how the rest of the commission feels on it, or if you want to just add another discussion, think about it and?
I think we typically head into agreements to handle maintenance issues for the county typically, because they don't have Parks Department on the scale. We, the city does.
Well, that's their only park, but I mean, when they set that up, they, you know, purchased it for the Franklin County Fair, basically.
Right.
But they did and then had, had a community meeting of what everybody needed in the community. At that time, we needed 60-foot athletic fields, the Y needed soccer fields, so it all meshed together that way. So it was kind of a community, community thing, but I mean, it can certainly be explored to, you know.
Just to see if there's cost savings.
It has been talked about, but it's not really gotten in there.
I do know that there, I think there are other counties. I do know that there, I think there are other counties that have done it, who are both city and county governments, not merged governments, but that it can work, and I was just wondering if it's worth exploring, to see if it really is some, something that we're not overlapping, that we can all do together, save everybody some money, some taxpayer money.
I think it's worth exploring as well, I don't know what will come from the exploration, because they are somewhat divided, but there may be, there may be some synergies there that would work well.
What do you think is a good tool or a good way to explore that?
That's the, that's the question.
I guess maybe getting you guys all in the same room and talk about what you do.
Okay.
Might be a start.
Somebody off the commission, one or two, somebody off the magistrates or...
Yeah, and then just see, see if it makes sense, maybe it doesn't make sense. Or maybe there's another piece that could make sense, but not the whole thing.
Sure, we're, we're open to that idea, not a problem at all, but as far as working the agreement, we, we have a wonderful working relationship with Charlie Lewis and the county, and we've all gotten along, you know, just fine, as far as parks relations and stuff. Anything, you know, they need, we help, or the vice versa, you know, and so we have, but, but we'd be glad to entertain the option, just a, a little guidance on what kind of tool we put together, and then we can speak with the city manager and devise a tool to, to look at that.
Thank you. Oh, wait, I have one more, remember, I put a letter in everybody's box, did you get your...
I just got it. I think.
And he's asking for his property, he, he has a property that is on the second tier. Gary, you want to, you want to jump in?
No, I'll let you go, I just...
And he has been in touch with me, he's been in touch with Gary, and he's been in touch with me, and I think he's been in touch with Gary, and in touch with me and Gary, and back and forth, and he wrote this letter wanting to see if he could have a year with his property, to see if he can bring it back up to code, basically. And again, he's on the second tier, do you want to take it from there?
Sure. This structure is the one, and property owners, that had numerous dogs and cats, and it was in a newspaper. And we, Rick Sparks called me and asked me to go determine if it was hallowed or not, or condemn it, or do whatever I needed to do, but we had to condemn it, it was, it looked like a flooded house, but it wasn't dirt, it was feces. Bathroom was opurable, the water heater is disconnected, a lot of facilities were disconnected, and they were living there. So we condemned it, about the, when you all asked about the structures to be demolished, that was one of the second priority, they had not issued an actual citation yet. On that second tier, they're one of eleven, I think it was, all of them have received a letter of citation, all of them hadn't saw October fourteenth to appeal, pay half the fine, meaning a hundred dollars, or do nothing, and they'd give it to an attorney. And that Code Enforcement Board meeting was scheduled for November, the fourth Tuesday of November. Spoke with this gentleman when he got the letter, he, we issued it on the fourth of October, and he came in on the fifth. We spoke on the phone a couple of times before that. So right now, we've issued a citation, and this letter really would be appropriate for the Code Enforcement Board, in my opinion. But if you all order me, or suggest, or direct me, not order, direct me, our staff to...
Sounds nicer.
To suspend the eleven pending, based on the nuisance ordinance, we can go that route, or we can stay in the process. And that's where we're at with this gentleman, about two weeks, about a week and a half, two weeks before we sent the letter, his mortgage company called. And they have hired a company to take over the maintenance of the property, and wanted to make sure they had the right, my name's on the plaque of the condemnation, because I was the one who did it, so they wanted to make sure that the city didn't have a problem if they went in, did inspections, and changed all the locks. And I replied, if you have the legal right to do so, I...
So how far is it into foreclosure with this financial institution? Because obviously, they're almost, they must almost own it if they're going to that.
Again, this is like a week and a half, two weeks best, that they changed all the locks, they've gone in and looked at the property, they do have, they put a sign up saying who's, who to call for their third party, the mortgage company. The owner is very distressed over a lot of issues, just being one more added to the table. And that's the best way I can put it, but it's going to require removing floors, subfloors, majority of the drywall. And facilities been disconnected for over a year.
What's the property as is? Not what it's crazy to have, have you been to it, what do you think it's worth?
Well, there's like three or four other homes for sale on the block.
Okay.
Just up the street, I'd be happy to find that out. I didn't pull up the P V A assessment. As is?
Yes, sir. Five thousand, twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, because it's going to, all of the duck work, it appears that the duck work was used as dustpan, throwing pieces.
Okay. I guess the reason I'm asking is, it sounds like there's no reason for him to put any money in it.
I tried explaining that to him.
I explained that it would be, if the city was to tear it down, we don't take ownership of the dirt, and then he could just build a new house. And we could probably maybe leave the foundation, all of it, that was agreeable to him, but he can't, I don't think he's comprehending that part, and it's his home, and he wants to fix it up, but he's not able to right now. And so I'm going to write a clear, to the board, suggested he appeal to the Code Enforcement Board, you have a clear description of what you plan on doing, you have a game plan, you got talking to a bank, I said, but the bank's calling me, and they've changed the locks on you. So it's a very sad situation, it was a very sad situation. And I'm controlled by the board, and it's still a sad situation.
So, do, I guess one, one thing is, is if it's second tier, we move it back, wait for the nuisance board, that gives him until January fourteenth, that gives him another two months, in which then he can write another letter and give it to the Code Enforcement Board, or do we as a commission say, we give you twelve months? And whatever our ordinance is written, then that's what we're going to do, based upon if your property is up to code or not?
Here's, I'll probably, I have with it, it's, I haven't seen it, haven't talked to the man, it sounds like a very sad story, but I don't want to get the commission into a position of having to make subjective decisions that go around our ordinances, because once we do that, I think, Mr. Moore, correct me if I'm wrong, but do we not open ourselves up to lawsuits?
Well, if you're going to do that, there's no need to pass the nuisance code, what you do is, you just abolish the property maintenance code, and you abolish the board, the code, the Board of Code Enforcement, and you just let everybody come here and, and
Make a case.
I guess you would keep the property maintenance code, but you wouldn't have the Board of Code Enforcement, instead, people would just come and, and present their evidence to the city, if they feel like they've been cited wrongly, or if they want additional time to make corrections or rehabilitate their home, and if that's what the commission wants to do, that's fine, but certainly things will run a lot differently, when you're having to deal with all these issues that the Board of Code Enforcement deals with.
Because every person that is going to be subject to this is going to have their sad situations, and it's just too subjective for us to be...
I think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I think Mr. Byers has a really good point, and the only thing I would, I would say is, is if we want to go ahead and have this second tier be under the nuisance board, if we can go ahead and direct that, if everybody's on board with that, we can just go ahead, and that gives them a couple of months. Let me also say, though, that I don't think we should give him a year, and I don't think this is going to end well, regardless of whether we tear it down next week, or we wait, we wait. I also say, though, that occasionally, there will be a reason to make an exception. I don't think it's very often, but because of justice and the inability of man to predict what is going to happen, you never want to say never, because every time I've told myself that, I've ended up looking pretty dumb. But I, I do think it's going to be really rare, and I agree with the solicitor, because there's no point in having it if you're never going to enforce it, and if we take a step to start trying to clean up abandoned property, and, and demolishing those properties, what, we're going to be under pressure as commissioners to change our minds. And so we, we've got to know that going in, that unless it's something extraordinary, we need to just stay with the policy, and let, let the properties be demolished, so that we can bring up the overall properties in Frankfurt.
Well, it sounds like this is probably extraordinary, but my point is, there's probably, anything's extraordinary to you if it's happening to you, so, you know, it's, I just think it's risky.
You're right. Problem, you know, it's, certainly a, a good way to address this is to say, we're going to put this under the nuisance, if you all are going to pass the nuisance ordinance, then to put it under the nuisance code, so that January one would be the day that the, January two, or whenever, would be the day that citations would be issued, and then that person would come under that.
Give it to your properties.
The only thing I was going to add is, occasionally, bad apples ruin a whole bunch, and, but we did this for a property, the old Y, years ago.
And here we are.
Suspended it.
Right.
And here we are.
Back to this park, we're here, and I would hate to have another old Y, but not an old Y, a house, and it's hard to explain to other citizens that we're citing, why they have to do it, and someone else doesn't. When it's a...
So let's let the process, the current process that we're in right now, work and put it under the nuisance board.
For all the tier-two, second priorities, we'll send a retraction, and identify that we're in the process of meeting the ordinance, and the board duties, and citations will come out in January, if the condition remains.
Will you take this letter to the nuisance board when they meet, or have Mr., get in touch with Mr. Taylor, too?
Assuming the condition's the same, yes, I will advise him to, that will be happy to use that, but he'll need someone there for him, if not himself.
Right.
And the third party has asked us to send him copies of anything that we sent out official, because I advise them that we are seeking demolition of the structure.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Do you got any?
You know, I've only got one, you were so thorough.
Happens every once in a while.
I just wanted to, this, I think we need to maybe set up another date, and maybe we can combine two of those dates, and that is the, the valuation, the city manager.
Yes.
We need to rest up, people that haven't done those, we need to get those in, and we need to set a date to do that, and maybe we could also add the mayor, maybe we could add the bond, first reading on the bond issue, which we're going to have to have a special meeting for in November, it looked to me like, because they won't be able to meet the November, early November meeting thing that we had, and that's a work session anyway, so we're going to need a, we're going to need a special meeting and a regular meeting to get those two readings for the bond, so maybe if we could do the city manager evaluation and close session, and we could do the bond, manning, open session.
I don't have that little calendar timeline he gave us out, but would November fourth work for that?
No, it wouldn't, that's why I said we're going to have to do something else.
They had it down on the eleventh on the calendar.
Eleven to twenty-two, was it?
So maybe the eighteenth?
Well, whatever you guys think, but, but we could do those two things then.
Hello, or do you want to take, well, it's going to give you three minutes. Can we do the fourth? Can we get that stuff done on the eighteenth, or do you think that's too much? If we're starting, if we, could we start earlier on the eighteenth?
Are you saying skip the fourth and do everything on the eighteenth? I can do that.
Just asking if that's...
I can.
I don't know, I think I had any, I know Chris Commissioner Haines said he had it, two o'clock on the...
Now, what are we doing? I got lost, sir.
November eighteenth. For another special meeting on the eighteenth?
You're talking about November, correct?
Yeah, we can do the special meeting on the eighteenth, you're not talking about getting rid of the meeting on the fourth, are you?
No, I was just saying, if you want to combine, if we start earlier, would you want to do that?
Do it all on the eighteenth, is what you're proposing.
Start earlier and do it all on the...
I don't, but I think you'll end up not doing a very good job, if that's just me.
Well, I'm clear on the eighteenth, whatever you say.
I'm fine either way.
One member does it, I don't think we...
Well, if the rest of you want to do it, I'll be here. Just think that's a lot of stuff to go over, evaluation, goals, and budgets, and then all the work session items.
Well, hopefully we'll have a good work session.
Would you want to move Troy's presentation down to the eighteenth then, and then just stick with the budget priorities and goals on the fourth?
Can, what time do you want to meet on the eighteenth, do you want to do it early, or five?
I don't care.
Okay, clear, five, that's all right.
Five o'clock on the eighteenth?
So we have the fourth and the eighteenth, correct?
With the regular meeting on the twenty-fifth.
And so what are we going to do, five P M., we going to do that?
Bond evaluation. And do you want to leave the
Bike pedestrian?
Bike pedestrian stuff on the fourth of it.
I'm fine with either, but you, just maybe you email Troy and find out what day works best?
Okay, we'll do that.
Settle, we got time.
So is the fourth still going to be at three thirty?
Yes.
I think we move the twenty-fifth to the twenty-sixth, and we'll take that on the schedule.
Does he have also any other business?
I've got like a citizen suggestion, complaint, actually, you know, I guess I could do work orders, but it's something, I don't know, I'll just put it out there, and it's something we can do, we can do, but we do have, in our code, we do have regulation for signs, right, going up on stop signs and telephone poles, they can't do that, so, this is my complaint from McDonald's this morning, that when people come into town and see these signs posted on telephone poles, and stop signs in yards that have been there, people don't come back to, number one, they're not supposed to be on those, those poles or signs, but the complaint was, they don't come back to take them down, but they're not even supposed to be there, so, it's just, I know it takes manpower to go out and do something about it, but I always like to take them down and deliver them to the front yard, it's advertised, is what I like to do personally, but...
It's what our former public authorities director used to do, he'd take it to the house in town. He did.
It's easy for me, because the signs are right in front, this is, I have a sign right in front of my house, so it's easy for me to, if I wanted to make deliveries everywhere, but I don't know if the city can.
I would totally advise you not to do that.
Go for it.
It's mainly businesses advertising right away, that aren't supposed to. You know what I mean, it's apartments, it's mattress company, you know, it's ever, ever, and that those signs are cheap, and it's effective advertising, so they just put them in the right way.
Anyway, so the comment was, when people come in from out of town, that they, they think it looks very tacky.
It is, it's trashy.
Look for a German, it looks like everybody's closing.
Look for a German, it looks like everybody's closing.
Second back to Mr. Rose.